Okay, at 7:01, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I want to say upfront that I appreciate all of you for being here this evening. We've fairly full agenda here, so we'll begin with roll call.
Councilor Long, here. Councilor Combs?
Here.
Councilor Hyers?
Backs it.
Councilor Ratliff?
Here.
We have John.
Thank you. Public comments. Comments will be accepted from the general public concerning topics that are not included in this meeting's agenda. Individuals will be limited to three minutes of speaking time. Total of all comments from the public shall not exceed 15 minutes. The preference will be given to Talalquah residents. In compliance with the Oklahoma Open Meetings Act, no action or discussion is permitted by the city council on any issue or topic raised by speaker during the public comment period. Is there anyone who would like to address?
Are your microphones on?
They're not.
Thank you, Barbara. Appreciate the save. John, do you want to sit forward? Is Ilte.
Thank you for the opportunity to present to the city council. What I furnish you is an update in terms of my research, in terms of the Talalquah Hospital Authority and its organizational structure and financial condition. So what I furnished you, and Mr. Councilperson Hyers is on the trustee, and what I do is furnish you the type of agenda they go through like we do for city council.
Excuse me, is your microphone on?
I don't know. Can you hear me now?
It's got something.
Hello?
I don't believe it's on.
Looks like the legislative session, it wouldn't work. Hello? Hello? I need the battery charged.
This one has Speak Up on, for instance.
Okay. What I did was furnish you the agreement that they have, and what am my main concern is this consent agenda items. These are various LLCs that have been established by the Talalquah Hospital Authority that appears in the blended unit audit report. Okay, that's what they have. And keep in mind, this is just a consent agenda. I don't know whether they receive it in total because they get put it on the agenda. What they do is give you a laptop when you walk in, everything is there, they take the laptops out. They will not provide any information prior to the meeting, which doesn't not give you any time to really read financial statements, so I'm going right now with three minutes. Here it is, you all agree, look at me, we agree on. And we go on. But the next item, what I did was, I requested compensation item regarding the officers and directors. And what I wanted to do was go through, make sure that I encapsulated both the W-2, the 1099s by any other component units. And this why it's phrased in this reportable compensation for from the related units, this is page two, okay? And then he estimated another compensation for other organizations. What I wanted to do was, who's getting what, okay, from which entity, from a W-2 or a 1099 for reportable income, okay? And that request was denied. What they furnished me a letter, under the Open Records Act, I did this. So what they have to do by law is to respond for the specific case, why they will not furnish me the information, okay? And I expected that, and that's what I wanted to do. I should not be providing my relevant research, the attorney should be able to do that, and I could review it to make sure it's proper legal form and things like that. I'll go back to research the case that they mentioned. But in other words, they would not provide the information, okay? In reference to this salary of one individual, I requested more than one individual, but they just an illustration, and what I did was, the date, the correspondence is stated there, and stated at the bottom when I mailed it to the CEO. And then the other thing that I have at the very back is the, oh, this is for the mayor, is the compensation, the net loss or profit of the hospital. You know, keep in mind, the trust agreement provides the sole purpose to that hospital is to have a 90-bed, short-term acute care. That's what it's supposed to have. And if they deviate from that materially, which seems to be happening, they should be informing council as the beneficiary in the city of Talalquah. And my concern is that they're doing all these transactions without making city council or the beneficiary of this trust agreement have acknowledged what they're doing. Funds are moving around, I can't find it unless I was actually in there, okay? I'm a normal expert witness, I need the evidence to be able to produce, like your report from the agreed-upon procedures. But I just want to make council aware of the effort and the lack of cooperation in receiving it, and even though the format indicates the 990, which I know they didn't have one, they haven't filed a 990 in other years, but it illustrates this broad scope, a very broad scope of my inquiry, by looking at 1099 by all the other entities involved. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to, this was later on about it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Does anyone else have something they'd like to address with council? Hearing none, we will move on to item number five, which is presentation of findings pertaining to the investigative audit performed by Harlingen Associates and the city of Talalquah's
I'm going to move this out of the way, since it's not working anyway, but I have no problem speaking loudly, so we will be good. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council, for giving us the opportunity to work through this with you, and we appreciate that, and I'm happy to be here this evening to present what we have found. You should have already received and reviewed our cover letter along with a two-page report. I want to point out first off that this is not a full audit of the financial statements. This was an examination of some specific items, transaction classes, entries, and that sort of thing. So it is not at all in any way a full look at your financial statements. The other thing I want to point out is that when you look to the findings, what you have there are summarized findings that represent a number of items. It would not make it to our list of findings if we were talking about a one-off, one-error type situation. So those are findings that collectively were of concern to us and of concerning matters. So in that, there were two things that were of the highest concern to me, like I said, there are a number of errors in the financial statements. But two things I want to bring forward to the council is oversight and management of the city's purchasing cards. The second item is journal entries and those being better controlled, better reviewed, looked at for accuracy, and ensuring the integrity of the city's financial statements. With that, I'm going to just leave it with the council for questions, because like I said, I believe you have reviewed my report.
And then just to clarify, LaDonna, the period that you audited was July 1st, 18 through June 30th, 19, correct?
That is correct. Thank you for asking that, because I should have clarified.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure everybody up there, everybody out there understood what period of time we're talking about.
Right. July 1, 18 to June 30, 19.
Okay, thank you.
Council, do you have any questions? Ms. Ealing? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Following with the city of Talalquah's internal accounting review, and you have copies of those reports, beginning, just a reminder of why an entity has an accounting system, to capture historical information, to provide financial information for decision-making, to allow for period-to-period comparisons, to assess fiscal tilt of an entity, to monitor for fraud or unintentional changes in business management and to manage your cash flow. The next 10 items that are listed are examples of items that were found in the review over the course of the last few months, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about those. But I would like to read my closing statement. Although management cannot attempt to discern intent, any entry-level staff accountant would know that expenses should not be posted to revenue accounts, and revenue accounts should not be posted to expense accounts. The resulting understatement of expenses and revenue seriously undermined the integrity of the financial reports. Combined with the lack of reconciliations that would have identified critical systems and process issues, management and council were provided misleading and inaccurate financial reports that could not be used to make sound financial decisions. In addition, as management continues to reconcile individual general ledger control accounts, it is anticipated that further irregularities may be found. We are taking steps within our systems to address the concerns that were raised by Harlingen Associates, particularly as relates to purchasing cards and to oversight of journal entries that were made. We recognize that we will still be addressing concerns for some time to come. John, did you have a question?
Yes, I was just concerned about the legislative that you made in terms of your closing, in terms of how you worded the legal process, the distinction between errors and irregularities.
I'm sorry.
And the last one here, the difference between errors and irregularities, that's very important in terms of the legal process.
Well, errors, for my own interpretation, errors are those things that are unintentional, transposition, something like that, irregularities, or something that someone did with some thought, enforced thought about what they were doing.
Thank you, that's what I was, thank you.
LaDonna, just to clarify, kind of what the mayor kind of closed everything out with, would you agree with those closing statements based on your experiences at forensic
Yes, I would. I would agree.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Are there any other questions or concerns? Hearing none. Item number six, something a lot more fun. Discussion and possible action related to potential agreement with Talalquah Trails. Councilor Combs?
You're correct. It's very exciting. We're moving forward with potentially bringing in lots of tourism, lots of revenue for the city, and the health benefits of what it's going to bring to Talalquah. But I'm not going to steal any thunder from Lori, so I think Lori has some presentation for you.
First of all, I want to say thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present to you who we are as Talalquah Trails Association and how we propose to work with the city to develop multi-use trail systems. I forgot I am the one controlling the slides, so keep in mind, it's been about 20 years since I've given a presentation, so hopefully this won't be as painful for you as it is for me.
First, I ride a bike.
I'm a trail runner.
She says I'm running a trail.
So first of all, who we are. We are a nonprofit organization registered with the state and federal government as a 501(c)(3). We are members of the International Mountain Biking Association, Oklahoma Earth Bike Fellowship Chapter. That is a mouthful, but what that does is, wrong way, it taps us into this nice orange box. 30 years of experience with IMBA's designing, planning, and managing trail systems across North America. They are the industry standard, their guidelines are followed by state and federal agencies, and they are the organization that is looked to as the leaders in knowing how to develop trail systems across the US. I'm just working it. I'm sorry. So who we are individually, I'm Lori Enlow, I'm a family nurse practitioner. I've been in practice locally for nearly 20 years, minus about three that we took off to northern Arizona, and I might know we did return very happily, and I'm glad we're back. David Rogers is a local bike shop owner and outdoor enthusiast. Jill Airline is an accountant, trying to retire, as I understand, and definitely a mountain biker. She was out on the trails up in Siomo Springs today and took some beautiful pictures. Dana Boornboor is an assistant professor at Northeastern State University, also an avid mountain biker. And Chris Ray is our, hi, I just went blank, I knew this was going to happen, he also works for a local business doing graphics design. That's an area that's far removed from anything I do, so that's why I had a hard time calling it. But anyway, that's our board. I think the nice thing about our board is that we are all essentially from here, we've all been here, if not have lived here all of our lives, some of us. We also bring to the table representatives from healthcare, from education, and from small business. So I think we have a good representation of what we need to think about in our community. The purpose, our mission is to create, the mission of Talalquah Trails Association is to create a multi-use trail system for the city of Talalquah to be used for mountain biking, hiking, and trail running, for everyone, for people of all ages and skills and abilities. We want the avid mountain biker out there, but we also want grandparents with their grandkids to be out there as well, able to use the trails, as well as people who have arthritis, who have physical limitations that make it difficult to get out in the wilderness, essentially, because of difficulty stepping over things and getting through things. Let me think, by the fifth slide, I would have it down. Just a quick, trails close to home, what does that mean? It means enhanced quality of life, and I think it's, I don't need to present any research to tell you that getting outside is good for you. However, I can tell you from my own research and my own 20 years of experience that we are at a tipping point in the United States. As it stands now, quality health indicators tell us that the next generation, my kids, your kids, are not going to live to be as old as we are. And that terrifies me and also makes me very ashamed. We have the opportunity to change that. We can reduce the things that are killing us, the things that are going to bring our children down younger than us, high blood pressure, heart disease, diabetes, and cancer. One in three people, so if you look to your left and you look to your right, one of you three will develop cancer in your lifetime. I have three children. One of my children, as it stands now, will develop cancer in their lifetime. We can change that. We can reduce heart disease, diabetes, and cancer between 20 and 30 percent, simply, simply, so difficult, by having a healthy diet and exercise, and we're not talking a lot of exercise, 10 minutes, three times a day, walking. That's all it takes in studies of hundreds of thousands of people to reduce your risk 20 to 30 percent. There is no pill I can give you that will reduce your risk even 5 percent. So this is, I'm very passionate about this. The other reason is, a lot of people are like, well, I wouldn't use trails anyway. Well, that's okay. You still benefit from trails, even if you will never step foot on one. If your neighbor Bob does, and he gets out there, and he starts reducing his risk 20 to 30 percent, guess what happens? Bob doesn't go to the emergency room and have a heart attack, and we don't spend $50,000 to $150,000 on that hospital stay. And guess what happens to your insurance premiums? So even if you never stepped foot on a trail, you benefit by your neighbors, by other people stepping foot. I could go on forever, and I know it's a long night, so I'll stop. Greater economic benefit, this is an area I'm not as familiar with, but I will tell you, because I started looking, the number of economic impact studies will bury you. Of communities just like ours and larger communities, there is no doubt that trails close to home brings money into the economy. Just an example, North West Arkansas, some of you may or may not be familiar with their pretty expansive trail system, they have put millions and millions in, they are seeing huge, huge quadruple the time that in economic benefit. The other interesting thing to note, about 50 percent of the users of trails in North West Arkansas are not from the area. They are coming from Tulsa, from Oklahoma City, from Texas, from Missouri. So about 50 percent of the population is coming in, spending the night, spending time on these trails, they're not from the community, and they're going to the restaurants and the Airbnb's and the hotels, coffee shops, bike shops. So it's generating income from outsiders, but the other really interesting thing and the thing that I love is it's also generating more income from its local population. People who live there are spending more money in their town. They too, like me, if I've been out on the trails all day, I don't really want to cook dinner, so I'm going to go to town and grab something to eat, eat with my family. I also need to fix the bike that I grabbed, I also need to add a tire, which you won't see me on a bike, but tennis shoes, running shoes, all of that kind of stuff. We spend more money in our own community when we have trails. Creation of community connections and friendship, getting out in the environment helps people connect in a way that you just don't see. I think probably a lot of you experienced that on vacations when you're out in nature, you just make connections with people that you can't make at Rezzer's or at the link. Not to mention the ability to have groups like Boys and Girls Club, Bike Club, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, coming out and being able to do activities and work together, having fraternities and sororities come out and help build trails. And again, improved health of citizens and future generations, and if you like, I can offer another 30 minutes on that, but I won't. See if I go the right direction. Basically, what we're proposing is the development of a multi-use trail system, as I said before, in partnership with the city of Talalquah, in particular on roughly 200-acre area located east of Talalquah, with the goal to maintain the natural beauty of the site with minimal impact on the environment as well as on neighbors. And that's one of the things we've already started to do, is reach out to the neighbors who will be impacted by this. And we have plans to sit down and talk about what their concerns are, what they would like to see, what they don't want to see. We understand that this is huge. This is a large, larger map of the area. To the right, you can see it says Cherokee County, that is the 200-acre area that we're referring to. If you go all the way to the left, you're looking at Talalquah proper as it comes over to the Illinois River. It's a grayish green area, this is Grand River Dam authority area, and the Illinois River coming down. And as you'll see, four green landowners, and then right there is that actual 200 acres of property that we're talking about. I went the right way. This is pulling it up closer, this just shows the 200 acres, as you can see, it's a very wooded area, which is great for trails. You may not think that initially, but it actually really is. You can see the topography, there's a ravine that kind of comes from the northeast side down to the southwest side, that's a beautiful feature, and that you could, you know, do switchback trails down, you can birdwatch, you can do all kinds of neat things, but there's also a lot of flatter areas for easier trails. And that just highlights it, again, so you can see it's about 202 acres is what we're looking at there. So project outline, kind of what we have in mind, basic, to give you an idea of what we're thinking. In year one, our goal would be to establish property entrance and parking using utility easements. We would need to get into an agreement with GRDA on their power line easement, and that's discussions that we would need to start here pretty quick. And then also develop some arterial trails on the 200-acre site. While doing that, we would be seeking grant funding and local support for the development of the trail system. The first grant that we're actively seeking would help fund developing a master plan with IMBA's Trail Solutions, and again, that gives us their expertise to come down, walk the property, assess the land, help us design a plan to develop sustainable trails that will serve us over multitude of years and not a trail system that would fall apart. So that's basically what we outlined for year one. Oh, gosh. Okay, so here's, so there's my little trail runner, running. This is just some slides showing examples of what trails look like and what trail use looks like. Here's a young girl doing a little trail race. Here are some kids, again, on a fairly easy trail. As you notice, the environment is still upgrowing all around them. This is where I would see like a Bike Club coming out.
This is where I would go, aww.
I know, I realize, yes. You know, I see kids and animals, and it would be good.
I'm sorry, I say Pooz and Ivy.
No kidding, I'm very sensitive. This shows a little bit different style of trail, but again, this shows how you can work with the land to preserve the environment, to have minimal impact, and to allow people to interact and see what we are living in, see what we have here. And then this just shows some demonstration of volunteers doing the actual trail work. That's the other thing that we would plan, is that the majority of the trail construction be done with volunteers and individuals. That's our goal. So that is the last of my slides. I appreciate, again, appreciate your time, I know it's a busy night. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, of course, we have an agreement between the Talalquah Trails and the city of Talalquah. Have you had a chance?
I heard a "no," I don't care.
Okay. Head rattling. I'll make a motion that we approve this agreement between Talalquah Trails Organization and the city of Talalquah to maintain our city trails.
I will happily second that.
Hey, Nate, will you come up, please? That really is my only question, I'm absolutely 100% for this, I just want to know what your feelings, what your feelings are in regards to the police and patrol of the premises, being that it's dislocated.
There have been some initial discussions, have a very strong working relationship with GRDA, who's going to assist us in some regular patrols, and obviously, we have a bike patrol unit that's growing every day. I got a phone call today about an organization going to donate us two more bikes. We should be about a dozen bike patrol officers by the end of this year, end of this calendar year. So with the different grant funding we have, we can even dedicate some officers at peak times, weekends, and whatnot, on bike patrol out there for an entire shift even, so have somebody out there during the daylight when people are riding at night, whatever it is. But some initial discussions, I don't have any concerns about getting it patrolled, obviously it is, you know, it's about 10-minute drive from probably the city limits, driving the speed limit, it's five or six if you're running lights and sirens, so we can get there fairly quickly, and GRDA has, they help us now in the city even, so.
And because, and Grant and I discussed this, because of the way that the city leased the property, then therefore, we as a city kind of assume that responsibility?
Correct.
As opposed to going from the county directly to Lori and her group, right? So that gives some oversight from us, right?
Correct. Yeah, that's my understanding. It's our baby.
You're the chief of it.
Yes. Yes. I understand, and it's, I think it's a good thing. We'll make it happen one way or another when it comes to the patrolling.
I was just wondering, have they done an environmental impact statement on putting in these trails?
That is in the plan. We are working, hopefully, touch base with Cherokee Nation about doing an environmental impact. impact study, yes. So I can't guarantee that that is being done because I don't know for sure, but that is the plan, yes.
After the, after like that, I think you're going to be required to have environmental impact statement. Those tracks do, and I, don't get me wrong, I'm all in favor. I love biking. If my foot wasn't messed up, I'd be right up there with you. But I just want to make sure we protect the environment.
We agree. We do want a environmental impact study, so. Thank you.
I don't go through the drawing.
We actually should have mapping this week. They were, they're in processing. They should be ready this week.
Other comments, questions, not roll call?
Councilor Holmes?
Yes.
Councilor Holmes?
Yes.
Councilor Rattler?
Yes.
Question carried.
Thank you. Item number seven, discussion possible action to approve the voluntary retirement incentive program. Not sort of long.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. My passing around the Pursue very short plan I'm proposing tonight, I first want to apologize that that was not included in the packet. I know that led to a lot of rumors and speculation and that was absolutely not the intent. It's very short, it's only five bullet points, so if you'll allow me all of those real quick. It is a voluntary retirement incentive program details. Number one, the city of Talaqua will offer a severance payment to eligible employees should they voluntarily choose to receive one year of retirement service from Oklahoma Public Employees Retirement System, also known as Obers. Employees should contact the Human Resources.
Can you bring the microphone closer to me, I'm absolutely.
I don't, is that better?
Yeah.
Sorry. I forgot, I scooted over closer to my friend Dowd so that Lori and Logan will continue behind me somehow. Next, I'm over to Alan. I apologize. I will start from the beginning. The voluntary retirement incentive program details. Number one, the city of Talaqua will offer a severance payment to eligible employees should they voluntarily choose to receive one year of retirement service from the Oklahoma Public Employees Retirement System, also known as Obers. Number two, employees should contact the Human Resources Director to determine eligibility and to voluntarily participate. That would be my dear friend Lynn behind me. And number three, employees should make this voluntary election by March 9th, 2020, if they are interested. Employees making this election agree to not modify the election and also to retire by June 1st, 2020. And employees are encouraged to contact their personal financial representative, attorney or tax consultant, obviously, before making this election. And I wanted to caveat off this and kind of make a few comments, just to let everybody know I wrote it down so I wouldn't screw it up or say it incorrectly. This is, the design of this is intended to be an optional program and it's intended to be a positive alternative to offer to the city staff. And this is absolutely not meant to run off our long-term staff or to harm any of our long-term staff in any way. Like I mentioned earlier, we know that there's some, it's a rumor circulating and I just wanted to apologize and offset those rumors and again, thank our long-term staff for the countless hours that they have worked to make our city a better place. Everyone up here, we can all agree that we have great respect and appreciation for what the city staff do on a daily basis and what they accomplish daily with minimal and very limited resources. The incentive program again is meant to help any of our staff who aren't interested in retiring or considering an early retirement. And if we have staff that do opt to participate in this incentive program, it provides the city substantial potential annualized cost savings. And this is why we're presenting it tonight in February is because the timeline is so that Trey hopefully doesn't come up to nothing tonight. He just opened the room and now we're illegal and I have to stop talking. And so now, he's a little earlier.
Cindy, were you going to enter?
Who can sing?
Call drop, Trey.
I tried it. For the record, when the meeting started, I gave him a pass that I would have dropped which he can't.
No, it's water, we have a long pipe. I don't have coronavirus at home.
Are you okay, Trey? Can I start like again? Did I lost my spot? And the reason why we're presenting it tonight in February, discussing it tonight is because the timeline is sticking ahead so that we as a council can better plan ahead for the future if we do have employees who do opt to participate in this alternative. I've talked to several people since this agenda hit and the example I gave is I had an uncle who was a longtime teacher in the state of Oklahoma. He went Oklahoma, has anybody ever been there? Kind of like the armpit of Oklahoma, that's over there, I would suggest. Lot in his armpit, okay, why? Okay, depending on who you talk to. Anyway, he worked for the state, he put his time in, he was able to retire, so Oklahoma teacher and like many do. He's now working across the border in Paris, Texas. So he's collecting his full retirement salary here and he's also collecting his full teacher salary in Texas. So he's absolutely living his best life, he's the happiest choice he's ever made. And so obviously, that's fit for some people, but not, it's not a good fit for everybody. That's why I cannot emphasize enough that this is an optional thing, that we're not forcing any of our employees to participate in. And I think I get all my high points and Nate hasn't stood up, so that's a good thing.
I was letting you finish.
Oh, they, 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 don't, don't you do it, Cindy. I, I think I've covered it all and, let's see. Okay, that's it. Now we can't thank our city staff enough or what they know. Questions? Oh, Nate, no, 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 you're doing this. Okay, here you go.
Just questions, no comments? Yeah. Okay, so Kevin was distracting me during the first part of.
He likes to do that. Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for being here tonight, Kevin. Speaking of long-term city staff, thank you for your many, many years of service.
So now it's one year to the employee, correct? Not to Obers, but to the employee is?
I'm gonna have to fill the check with.
It would actually be, in, in, in this situation, it would be an equivalent to the one year.
Correct.
But it would be for the employee to manage.
Right. It's not going straight to Obers, it's going to the employee, that was my question. Okay.
That burden goes back to the employee.
As far as paying Obers or whatnot?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for your last question.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Any council having questions?
If we have no further discussion, is there a motion?
I will happily make a motion to approve as recommended.
Okay. Have a motion in second. Any further discussions, not roll call?
Councilor Holmes?
Yes.
Councilor Rattler?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Question carried.
Thank you. Item number eight, discussion possible action to close out the FAA airport grant and return the funds of $14,921.42 back to the general fund. Mr. Jettman?
Eight, nine, 10, 11 are all housekeeping accounting measures that are cleaning up our account records as we continue through the process.
Coming motion to adjourn is presented.
Motion in second, discussion.
Eleven, all those. You can read them all if you're doing. So you just didn't.
Let's just do the first one. The roll call.
Councilor Rattler?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Collins?
Yes.
Question carried.
Okay, so the idea of doing the next three together is a great one, thank you they are. So let me go ahead and read nine, 10 and 11. Discussion and possible action to close out the Department of Justice TFOS grant and return $2,000 back to the general fund. Discussion and possible action to close out the Bulletproof Fest grant from 2017 and return $3,763.49 back to the general fund. And discussion and possible action to close out the FBI EVOVCTF grant and return $17,058 back to the general fund.
I make a motion to approve as presented.
Okay.
Motion in second, any comments, questions? Roll call.
Councilor Rattler?
Yes.
Councilor Long?
Yes.
Councilor Holmes?
Yes.
Question carries.
Thank you. Item number 12, discussion possible action to approve the amendment and restatement of the trust indenture creating Talaqua Industrial Authority as previously approved by two-thirds vote of the Talaqua Industrial Authority's trustees, February 12th, 2020. Mark, do you want to address this?
Yes, Mayor, if I may.
Please.
Mayor, Council, thank you for the opportunity to address this tonight on behalf of the Talaqua Industrial Authority. I hope each of you have in your packet the draft of the indenture amendment and restatement of the original trust indenture that was approved by the Talaqua Industrial Authority on February 12th, I believe it was. The vast majority of this is boilerplate language carried over from the original 1981 indenture agreement. There are really just about four changes in particular that affect this document. Number one, on paragraph one, page one, beginning with the name change, the Talaqua Industrial Authority would now be known as the Talaqua Regional Development Authority. So that would be the new name of the entity. And then the first paragraph, or first sentence of paragraph two, it also repeats the name Talaqua Regional Development Authority. The next change would be on page 10, which would be, the number of trustees will be expanded from five to seven. All trustees must be residents of the municipality and the majority of trustees shall be residents of the beneficiary city, that being of course, Talaqua. The trustees will be appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council, just as it is now. Okay? And then on page 11, it talks about the exist, the current trustees and spells out the terms of those current trustees. And one reason we'd like to expand this from five to seven trustees, it really better enables our board to obtain a quorum and the opportunity to form committees and to carry out our mission. And it'll also allow us to expand our depth and skill set among our trustees. Now, page 11 defines the terms, as I said, of the existing trustees and how they would be rotated off over their respective years. And last but not least, on page 14, under item 10, the fiscal year end of the trust shall be, shall be June 30th. Don't ask me how, but in the original trust indenture of 1981, it said our fiscal year end was December 31st. However, all this time, our fiscal year end has actually been June 30 to correspond with the fiscal year end of the city.
15.
So that would be a pretty easy change. And with that, that encompasses the changes proposed by the Talaqua Industrial Authority, now known as the Talaqua Regional Development Authority with your approval tonight. So, anyone have any question?
I have two questions. You mentioned that you were going from five to seven, it's a better, and I forget the term that you used, reach your mission, is that what you said?
Yeah.
What is, what is the, what is the mission of the TRDA?
Well, it's in pages about two through 14 in here. And it basically, Trey, it's about anything that pertains to economic development within the, within the city. And that's really been the case all along. Our focus has primarily been on the industrial park, but we need to expand that and include the retail sections of our city and it also should include some things within the county. Economic development does not know political boundaries. And with that known by us, we need to begin to encompass our county in, in the, in the work of this group, so.
And my, my second question, my second question, that is, will you guys now have, and maybe this is a question for you, will you guys now have eminent domain authority or powers?
No, sir. I don't believe we do. I don't know. This is a legal question.
The powers of the trust authority are the same as what were established back in the 1981, so I can refer you to those and review that, but.
I was just curious, it's, I was just curious, it's been, you know, something, conversation I've had before, the economic development authority can be established by a municipality in order to, for lack of economic development, so.
There is.
It's the question would be, are we a municipality?
There is broad authority for this trust, our authority, I guess, keeps, we're using the word authority, but they have authority to clear, blind, induce and things like that through incentives, et cetera. That's what you're wondering as well. So there could be some, some carrot version of that for sure.
But that is not a change in the language. It is a carrot board, it's already decided.
Just on that.
Other questions?
Mr. Hushelton, and I visited with you yesterday, thank you for spending time with me to kind of go over some of this stuff with me. And I got home last night and I got to thinking, one of the things that I would like to add, and I had a chance to talk to one of the other trustees today and some of the people up here at Pursue, is that we add term limits into this. And I was thinking initially, I was going to go out to the other counselors and to Alan Sue. I was thinking maybe capping it out at three, three-year terms as a max, because I know TPWA, you max out after 10 years of service. So I was trying to keep maybe everything a little consistent and I wanted the other counselors to consider that.
Three consecutive three-year terms?
Yeah.
Yes.
That we think that would be pretty.
I think that'd be fine.
Would that be reasonable?
I think that would be fine.
Okay. So I think everybody's okay with that. I would happily like to make a motion that we approve as recommended with the exception of inserting a cap limit of three, three-year terms. Would that be the correct language, Grant?
Yeah, they'd have to go back to their trustees to be approving it, pretty submitted to you.
Okay, is that gonna hurt things?
I don't know. I know there was a bit of a rush on the TIA's side for some unveiling of some things. Another option that you could do without a cap limit, if you had trust, that they'd bring it back or you could request that they make amendment to that in the future. It's your call.
So you're saying that she has the option to make the change or make requests to pass their, their meeting?
Correct.
So we can pass as is.
Would that be the easiest and cleanest grant to do it that way?
Typically, hands away, our current, our trust indenture reads is it has to go to two-thirds of the trustees be approved and then submitted to the council through two-thirds vote as well, which is a, it has to be a unanimous majority of the council here tonight to just sort of carry that through.
Since we have three counselors now, we just have to have three.
I would just share that we did have a special call meeting for TIA on Monday the 24th.
24th.
If that makes a difference in what you need to do.
But if it's not approved tonight, you won't be able to do the next item on the agenda either. And that's.
Yes. What is this economic development concept? Do they buy property anywhere outside the industrial park, industrial authority? Economic thing is so broad, they can buy anything in the city, takes it off the tax rolls.
That is the same powers that they currently have?
Right.
So there are no changes to what is currently in their powers?
Oh, okay, so they can actually acquire property outside the cit, the industrial park?
It's going to make it more, you know.
Well, I understand the concept, obviously, the current issue that I'm working on, this is what disturbs me, you know, about.
They do have the ability now to acquire property outside of the industrial park.
Oh, they do?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I was unaware of what the indenture said.
Thank you.
Why would you want to do this, prefer to?
Well, I do not want to interfere, interfere with the passing of the agenda item 13, but I would like to, so great, if you could explain it to me one more time because I don't know that completely.
Well, our current, our, the current trust indenture does talk about approval of two-thirds of the trust authority and then a submission of that document to the council, two-thirds of the council, true as well, both full city bodies. So it doesn't talk about the concept of you wanting to send it back with changes and see if it dies and if you rescind it as an item or not. I understand your, your concept for sure and I think it's a great one, I don't think it's a problem in any way, it's just a, it could be a timing issue for the trust. The trust could always perhaps let this die, go back and vote with your suggestive changes and then bring it back again, if that's what the trust would like to do.
Josh, just talk, Josh. Just talk, Josh, we can hear you.
I would like to point out that you guys have the authority to remove us at any time anyway, so the, the idea of term limits, I get the idea, but it's not really necessary. If you wanted us, because, if you want to remove us because you didn't like the way I dressed.
You can remove any, any trustee, if I have authority of us. You can remove any, any trustee if I have authority of us and that's just-
For no cause at all, if you'd, if you'd like to, I mean, I wouldn't-
It's like an actual-
Yeah, I wouldn't suggest that happen to anyone or anything, but currently, that's the way it's set up. That's why there is a term limit. I think we have a weird issue, because if you look at the agenda, it's to approve their resolution, it's not to modify or, so you're stuck with their resolution and have to try. Well, that's the way the indenture reads anyway, so.
So, do you-
I'll make it easy on you, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second to further discussion? If not, rocall.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Wong?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 13, discussion possible action to appoint Anna Knight and Josh Ketchens to the Talacaw Industrial Authority, so just to move positions, slots as it's printed. Okay, yes. So, is there any question, concern?
I'll make a motion and we approve to, I'm sorry, I'll make a motion to appoint both Anna and Josh to the Talacaw Regional Development Authority.
Yeah, that's fine, this is the case, so that's fine.
Have a motion, do we have a second? Have a motion second, any further discussion? Rocall, please.
Counselor Wong?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number 14 is proposed executive session.
Second.
Rocall.
Counselor Wong?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
It is 9:18, do we have a motion to return from executive session? Motion second, do we have a rocall? One second.
Just Ratliff and then Combs.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Wong?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Carry.
Thank you. Item number 16, discussion possible action related to City of Talacaw versus Springwater Properties LLC at All, Cherokee County Case Number CB 201843.
I would like to make a motion to globally settle City of Talacaw versus Springwater Properties LLC, Cherokee County Case Number CB 2018-43 by way of offered easement to be signed by Christie and Stephen Springwater as authorized signers of Springwater Properties LLC and delivered to City Hall by no later than Friday, February 21st, 2020 at noon. If not accepted by the deadline, the offer will be rescinded and the city attorney will be authorized to pursue any other legal action, including eminent domain.
I'll say it.
There's a motion and a second, is there discussion?
Can you explain what you're, what, what you're doing? Explain what the, what are you saying?
A call up to the voting.
Sorry.
It's late to make.
Explain what you said. So you're asking them for an easement, is that right?
We have an easement agreement that we have been negotiating. And so, we are establishing a date by which that needs to be accepted.
If, if Springwater Properties LLC signs off on the easement, the easement contains complete global settlement of the case.
Okay.
And there's a price for the easement, but, you know, they have until Friday at noon to sign off on the document that we've been working on.
Gotcha.
Otherwise, we look for other alternatives.
Defense comes in at some point. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Are you authorizing a payment, any kind of money to them?
With the-
Is this a budget question?
There would have to be a budget amendment to do that, yes.
You need to approve that expenditure, potential expenditure, because if, if not, they sign off on it.
That, that would be a good amendment to this, you're correct.
So, I would like to modify my motion.
Authorize a budget amendment for the amount-
And you're gonna have to identify where you're getting the money from and transferring
So, that would be coming from the Stormwater Fund?
Okay, so, how do I, where would I-
The only thing you'd have to amend, if, if I may, would be to allow for a budget amendment from the Stormwater Fund to-
Reallocation.
Yeah, thank you, reallocation for that, that amount stated in the easement, should it be accepted.
Including a budget-
Reallocation.
Reallocation from the Stormwater Fund.
Within the Stormwater Fund.
From within the Stormwater Fund. Who's taking that, Trey?
Yes.
Are you gonna second my modified motion, Trey?
Will you read it again?
Hey, look, just a song.
I did not, I didn't hear it, it's not a song.
It doesn't have to get, it just has to come out.
Shh, shh. Now I won't read it again.
I don't want you to get that, last second.
Thank you.
We have a motion second, further discussion?
Counselor Wong?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item number 17, discussion related to actions and/or inactions of city treasurer and potential removal and/or replacement of city treasurer.
I would like to make a motion to accept the re, oh, I'm not ready to make my motion, I'm sorry. I'm gonna shut up.
Okay. Is there discussion?
Yes.
I think you made a motion, I think you should make a motion first.
You can make a motion first, okay. Okay, I make a motion to accept the resignation of Lanny Williams as the city treasurer effective immediately as of February 18th, 2020, and to appoint Marty Heinzinger as the city treasurer for the remaining term.
Is there? Have a motion second, is there discussion?
Now, with that said, I think that it's fair, I think that it's fair in, you know, for Lanny, who's served on this, you know, who's served on this body for, since, since 2001, I think that, I think that with the new administration, and I, and I made this clear, I thought in some of the other meetings, that, you know, we realized that Lanny didn't see eye to eye necessarily with the previous administration. And when I came on, when Sue came on, you know, I was, you know, I had a discussion with Sue and Sue had a discussion with Lanny and I, I felt like we were, I felt like we were opening a new chapter, that things, that things were gonna be different. And, you know, no, no disrespect, I don't think there should be any disrespect necessarily to Lanny as a, as a public figure, as a public servant, as a, as an accountant, as somebody who's, you know, serves within the community and has, you know, a reputation as being a, you know, as being very good at what he does. I just don't feel like this purpose and serving, and serving this, what he was able to live up to his full expectation.
And I, I disagree with his, his letter. The findings that, from the audit and the findings from the internal audit can, can support that.
Are we supposed to understand what you just said?
Probably. Did you not see the, read the finding?
So, probably without knowledge of what is in the letter, that would make as much sense as it would if you actually have the verbiage, but.
I apologize for interrupting.
You can if you'd like, if you want to, there's no problem. Read the resignation.
Let me see that, I've been over here. In the, in the resignation letter from Mr. Williams, it says, "I submitted my resignation as Talacaw City Treasurer as of this date. Please convey to me any facsimile signatures, devices within 30 days. I have served as city treasurer since May of 2001. The duties and responsibilities expected of this office have changed dramatically in the last couple of years, and I feel this office no longer has the support I need to complete my duties. The treasurer's main job, function, as described in the Talacaw City Charter, is to invest the city's excess funds. My investment portfolio record over the last nine years has been excellent. The city corpus can only be invested in certain investments according to the state constitution, and that, in this regard, I feel the city has been served well. Sincerely, Lanny Williams."
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I just want to reiterate what these two said. I mean, we agree that the letter is not an accurate representation of the reality, so, hence the motion.
Do we have a rocall?
Counselor Combs?
Yes.
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Wong?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And item number 18 is adjournment.
Second.
Rocall?
Counselor Ratliff?
Yes.
Counselor Wong?
Yes.
Counselor Combs?
Is that a yes? Yes.